Welcome to the 2023 Fort Atkinson City Council Candidates Forum. Our forum will include commentary and responses to pre-selected questions from three candidates who will be running for three seats on the Fort Atkinson City Council. Voters will also find the names of these candidates on the April 4th Spring General Election Ballot. Candidates are elected to two-year terms. Voters headed to the polls should also know that they will find the name of incumbent Megan Hartwick on the April ballot. While she initially announced her intention to run, she later withdrew. She has requested that voters not cast their ballots for her. Our remaining candidates, with the exception of a possible challenge from a write-in candidate, will be running unopposed. Our candidates are Mason Becker, an incumbent, and John Donahue and Kyle Jaikle. During our forum, each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement, two minutes to answer each of several questions, and they will be allowed two minutes to offer final thoughts. Our forum is sponsored by Heart of the City, the American Association of University Women, and FortAtkinsonOnline.com. Our questions were selected by our journalists at FortAtkinsonOnline.com. I'm Michael Klisch, and I will be serving as moderator for the event. We're here with incumbent Mason Becker. Hello, Mason.
Hi, Michael. Thanks for having me.
Would you give us your opening statement, please?
Absolutely. Thanks again for having me. As you just heard, my name is Mason Becker. To tell you a little bit about myself, I grew up in Fort Atkinson. I've lived in the area for basically my entire life. My wife Laura works at Black Hawk Tech in Janesville, and we have two sons. Alec is 11 and Cyrus is 6. I have some small business ownership experience with my family's restaurant business in the area. I recently started a new position as a development coordinator in the city of Watertown. I also happen to be president of the Fort Atkinson Lions Club, and I'm currently pursuing my master's in public administration at UW Oshkosh, hopefully graduating this December. So now that I'm running for my, believe it or not, fifth term on the city council, I can say I've accumulated a lot of experience, mostly positive. I've had the opportunity to serve on our finance committee and other groups like our Plan Commission, Economic Development Commission, and I've also had the honor of being the city council president for a total of three years. So folks know I'm the most tenured member of the city council, and I'm also the only incumbent running for reelection this year. So I'm hoping I can use my experience and serve as a bridge to the next set of leaders in Fort Atkinson. Our city has made a lot of strong progress the last few years in many areas in terms of infrastructure, public safety, and economic development, but we still have more work to do and I'm hoping to be part of that process. So again, thanks for having me, Michael. I'm looking forward to talking about the issues that matter most to the people in Fort Atkinson.
Thank you, Mason.
Thank you.
Start with the questions. Recently, some, including the Fort Atkinson City Council and other organizations such as the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, have called the state's funding system used for critical local services "broken." Do you agree with that assessment? If so, why not?
Well, I don't think how anybody could disagree with that statement. I think it's clear if you look across just our general area and the entire state that the funding mechanisms for local government are clearly broken. We rely way too heavily on the property tax to fund not just services, but our essential services, and we're seeing more and more communities just like Fort Atkinson being forced to go to referendum to fund critical services like public safety. So you know, absolutely is broken. We need our legislators in Madison to step up and do what's right. Right now, the state of Wisconsin is sitting on a projected $7 billion budget surplus, which that's our money. That's money that comes from the income taxes that we pay, that comes from the sales taxes that we pay on goods and services. And they really need to go back, look at why share revenue was created. It was created to fund essential local needs. So they should be returning more of that money to us. Now, I'm optimistic. I've talked to people like our city manager Rebecca Lemire and other local leaders, and they're saying that they feel that they're closer than ever to getting something done as far as funding reform. I don't think it's going to be something that makes everybody happy, but hopefully we'll go a long way to funding more of those essential services in communities like Fort Atkinson.
As you mentioned, it's been widely reported there's a $7.1 billion surplus at its disposal in the state. The next two-year budget cycle, do you believe we should use those funds to support or to be used to support services at the municipal level?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I look at some of the choices we've had to make in Fort Atkinson the past few years. I think back to my first term on the city council. We saw what a sorry state our roads were in, but we didn't have a funding mechanism available to repair those streets. So we passed a wheel tax, and unfortunately, everybody in Fort has to pay an extra $20 per vehicle per year. But that allowed us to augment our street budget by about 50%, and we've been able to take a proactive approach to maintenance. I can look at last year, like I just mentioned, where we passed a public safety referendum, and that was really a difficult decision. It was, I remember when it was first announced, it kind of came as a shock to a lot of the local residents that we were going to be ending service with the private ambulance provider that we'd been using for a number of years. But we looked at the staffing situation with our fire department and with our police department, and we knew that change had to happen. Now, we did that through a public referendum, so the voters had to have their say, but it was a, it's a process when you go to referendum that's inefficient, it can be divisive, it pits neighbor against neighbor, and I think the biggest shame of it is it forced our public safety personnel, our firefighters and police officers, to kind of justify their own existence. And I thought that was really a shame that they had to be put in that position for doing their jobs that are so essential to our community. So hopefully, yes, more of that revenue will be coming back to Fort Atkinson, and I'm going to try to stay optimistic about that.
Fort voters last year approved a referendum allowing the city to increase its budget above its revenue cap, but $769,000 into perpetuity, excuse me, to pay for additional fire and EMS assets. City officials have said the money will still not fully cover the costs, as you mentioned. How should the city fund those future expenditures? And should the state or the county play a role?
I would love to see the state play more of an active role in funding public safety. I think one thing residents have to understand is that this is not the way it works in most other states throughout our country. In terms of funding for local law enforcement, Wisconsin is dead last for funding at the state level, which, you know, that makes you wonder when people talk about backing the badge and things like that, and when they get their endorsements from the police union, are they putting their money where their mouths are? Right now, for the most part, numbers of our legislature are not. That's just a simple fact. Beyond that, you know, I can look at the long term. That's absolutely correct what you said. That's a static amount of money. It's never going to go up unless we would somehow in the future go back to referendum, which would be a really hard decision. So I think for future growth, as costs will only continue to rise, we need economic growth in Fort Atkinson, and a lot of that's going to have to come through new construction of new housing and also hopefully new businesses.
The city's moving forward with plans to build a new Department of Public Works campus at the site of the current campus. Is this a good idea? Should the city be moving forward with these plans?
It's, to me, it's not really a choice. If you've had the chance to tour a current public works facility, it's about 60 years old. When it was originally built, it was by no means a palace. And as I've said in the past, Fort Atkinson has prided itself on getting as many years out of our facilities and equipment as we can. We've stretched those dollars as far as they could go, and now a lot of those dollars have ripped in half. And if you look at our public works facility right now, I will fully acknowledge it's in shameful shape. You can go into our public works supervisor's office, and there are literally holes in the ceiling. I mean, it's that bad. It's frankly not a place where I would be comfortable working, and I give the men and women who work for our city credit for putting up with it, but they should have a place that we can be proud of and that we could bring, say, potential business somewhere and say, "We made this investment in our public works. We're going to keep our city's appearances up. We're going to keep our streets plowed, our trees trimmed," and so on. So yeah, we do need a new public works facility. We evaluated the potential sites. As you might know, we did look at the Lorman property at one point, but the funding mechanism we used to acquire the Lorman property requires us to sit on that land for five years without doing anything. We frankly don't have five years to work with our current public works facility. So we do need to move forward, but hopefully we'll build a great facility that will last us for the next 50, 60 years.
What do you think should be done with the Lorman property?
For the near term, you know, we've gotten the remediation of the property done. That was a good thing. There were a lot of contaminants in the ground that were just found over the years due to nature of the work that was done, and frankly, a lot of it happened through no fault of the last property owner. So that's one thing I want to make clear. Some of the contamination happened many decades ago. I don't believe the private sector was going to step in and spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars required to clean up that property. But now, we do have to sit on it for five years, but at least it can be returned to a green space sort of state. So at least people, you know, if you, literally, if you wanted to go have a picnic on it, you could. If kids want to come kick the soccer ball around, they can. So that'll be the immediate future of that site. The long term, I would love to see it redeveloped. I think it would be a great location for housing, maybe could be single-family, maybe multifamily. I mean, who wouldn't like to live next to Ralph Park and have those facilities nearby? I think that would be great.
Indeed. Let's get back to roads.
Sure.
When it comes to the repair work, what do you think the city is doing right and what do you think it needs to do differently?
What we're doing right is we're getting as much work as we can done every single year. You recall, Michael, when I first ran for city council back in 2015, I think you would agree, our streets by and large were in deplorable shape throughout the city. There was no plan proactively to fix them. It was very piecemeal. We, with the wheel tax revenue, we were able to adopt a proactive plan for maintenance. So we're trying to get as much done as we can. But long term, we do need additional funding, and that's either, that's going to have to either come through increases in the property tax levy, or hopefully, if the state steps up, does the right thing and gives us some funding for additional services, because realistically, with inflation, costs are only going to continue to rise.
Indeed. Housing opportunities, jobs, manpower, growth, attracting new businesses, they all seem to be connected. Do you think the city is sufficiently tackling these problems?
I think we're doing as much as we can, you know. You laid out a few different items, but I'll talk about one of those in particular that I'm really passionate about, and that's housing development. It's been about 20 years since we've even seen a new apartment building built in Fort Atkinson. I've talked to people in my business, employees that have been nearly in tears because they can't find an apartment to rent, and I've literally had people tell me if I can't find a place to rent by next week, me and my kids are going to be living in my car. The dearth of new housing construction has caused rents to rise. It's made properties more expensive, and that hurts everybody's pocketbooks. What I'm proud to say is that I do think our investment in 75 acres along Banker Road is going to pay off. We've already seen approval for a plan to build two new apartment buildings on Campus Drive. And by the way, the Planning Commission just looked at a proposal from Hoffman Development Group to construct three additional new apartment buildings on the Baker Road property. So we potentially have five new apartment buildings coming in the next couple of years, and I think that's just tremendous momentum for our community.
We're about out of time, Mason. Could you give us your closing statement?
Yeah. Let me flip over my cheat sheet here. Apologize, they're sticking together. But yes, thanks again for having me, Michael, and thanks again to the sponsors in Fort Atkinson Online for having this forum. I appreciate everybody who took the time to go online and tune in, so to speak, and listen. Being engaged with local elections is critically important. I really feel that local government is the model for how things should work. We don't worry about what political party someone's with. We don't worry about personal ideology. We come together, we have our debates, but we build consensus, and we try to make the best possible decisions for our community. My main goal over the next two years is I just want to make sure that Fort Atkinson continues to be a great place to live, work, and play. Believe it or not, many communities throughout Wisconsin are looking to Fort Atkinson as a model because of some of the things we've done. When it comes to fixing our infrastructure, when it comes to our plans for housing, when it comes to economic development, those conversations are actually happening. We have so many strengths in so many key areas, we just need to keep building on them. I want to mention we have two newcomers running for city council this year, Kyle Jaikle and John Donahue, and I appreciate them stepping up and sacrificing their personal time, time with their families, to step up and serve their community and run for office. We're going to need more people to do that in the future. I want to mention I'm grateful that I've had the opportunity to serve with so many different people who've brought so many different perspectives to our city council over the past few years. I can say it's made me a better leader, and I'm grateful that I got to serve for two years with my friends Chris Shear and Megan Hartwick, who regretfully aren't running again, but that's their prerogative. I'm grateful as well to have the opportunity to serve my community for two more years. While this is no longer a contested election, I am urging you to get out and vote to honor before April 4th. It is a critical election this year with a state Supreme Court race on the ballot, and I hope I've earned your support for two more years on the council. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mason. That concludes our time with Mason, and thank you for joining us. Joining me now is candidate John Donahue. Hello, John.
Hello, Michael. Good to see you.
Would you like to give us your opening statement?
Of course. Thank you very much. I want to, first of all, extend my thanks and gratitude to those who signed my nomination papers. This is a fantastic opportunity, and I feel well-equipped for the position of city council, and I'm looking forward to it a great deal. I'm coming to the position with, as you say, life comes full circle. My family came here in 1963, laid down roots here in town, and I left for a few years to complete my military career, and I worked in Washington DC for 12 years, and then it was time to come back to Fort Atkinson. So I'm very happy to be back and ready to give my fullest contribution to the city and to bring us along, bring us along as a wonderful, wonderful place to live, which it is.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Recently, some, including Fort Atkinson City Council and organizations such as the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, have called the state's funding system used for critical local services "broken."
Yes.
Do you agree with that assessment?
Yes, of course I do, of course. And I know it's been broken for quite some time. And one of the things that I seem to understand from various stakeholders who are involved in that revenue sharing program is that we are not alone, and there are many municipalities that have the same challenges with revenue sharing as we do in Fort Atkinson. I know that we had a listening session, I think it was last week, with State Representative Scott Johnson, and hopefully, things will be fixed. We have, like I say, many stakeholders who are sharing in that same problem, so we will hopefully get that squared away.
It's been widely reported there's a $7.1 billion surplus as we head into the next two-year budget. Do you think those funds should be used to support services at the municipal level?
I think that would be definitely something that would factor into the revenue sharing mechanism that the state of Wisconsin has with its municipalities, most certainly. Not to take away other priorities that the state of Wisconsin would have on its own, but we all come up together, and I think that part of that surplus should be shared back with those municipalities who definitely had a role in creating that surplus. So yes, I would very much favor to see some of that surplus returned home to us, absolutely.
Fort voters last year approved a referendum allowing the city to increase its budget above the revenue cap, but $769,000 into perpetuity to pay for additional fire and EMS assets. City officials have said the money will still not fully cover rising costs coming in the years ahead. How should the city fund the future expenditures? Should the state or the country, or the county, excuse me, play a role in that as well?
We are not alone in the expansion of our public safety and 911 EMS services. This, I believe, was an initiative that was undertaken with the understanding that it would be more of a regional service, particularly with 911 EMS. So it's not as though Fort Atkinson is alone in this particular fiscal challenge. And I know that there's been a lot of work done in making sure that surrounding municipalities are brought into this new 911 EMS system. Public safety and first responder services is something that should not be compromised. So I'm glad that the referendum went through, and I think in terms of projected shortfalls in budgeting for this expansion of public safety and first responder services, I think it was expressed in our city budget passed last fall that we have to expect fluctuating costs. They will inevitably rise, and I'm confident that we have a way of managing those increased costs going forward.
The city's moving forward with plans to build a new Department of Public Works campus at the site of the current campus. Should the city be moving forward with these plans?
Well, I think the answer to that question would be borne out in just looking at the existing facility, which is wholly inadequate, wholly inadequate. There are, you know, there are a number of services that the city would be able to administer to its own equipment that, right now, it's having a very, very difficult time doing. So in terms of building up the Department of Public Works facility and anticipating our growth, our city's growth, I think that this would be a good time to go ahead with that project. We just passed Phase 1 last week, which is the design phase, and I think we chose a contractor to do that project, which gave us the best price and the best expertise for that project. So using that as a baseline going forward, I think we'll be in good shape for that.
What do you think should be done with the city-owned former Lorman property?
Well, that is one of our TIF districts, Tax Incremental Financing Districts. So it is an area of town which is obviously in need of development. There are some considerations, though, Michael, with regard to environmental concerns. I remember when the Lorman facility was a viable business in town with Milt Lorman and his family running that operation, and there was a lot of activity on that piece of real estate for many, many years. So I know it's going to have to rest for a while until the environmental thresholds have been satisfied. As you know, it's been pretty much cleared at this point, so we're glad about that. So, and that particular Tax Incremental Financing District, I think, also extends to the Thomas Industries property as well.
Is the city making progress when it comes to the repair work? Do you think what the city is doing is right? Should it be doing something differently?
Well, we do the best we can with the resources that we have. There are many neighborhoods in town who have expressed concern with regard to the maintenance of our roads. You're talking about the city streets, and I know that our city engineer maintains, say, if you would, a priority list, and it's just a matter of working down that list as long as funds are available to do so. Obviously, it would be a tremendous challenge to try to get all of that work knocked out simultaneously, but we are just working down that list as best as we can. And there are some areas of town which probably need a little bit more attention than others, such as Kramer Street by Opportunities Incorporated, and also Whitewater Avenue and that part of town as well. So we're working toward that.
Housing opportunities, jobs, and manpower, growth by attracting new business, they all seem to be connected. Do you think the city is sufficiently tackling these shortages, and in what order should these problems be addressed? And might as well ask Kyle.
I mentioned in my candidate's statement that was published this week that one of the main priorities of Fort Atkinson is to expand its tax base. The two major components of the tax base are residential properties and the other one being industrial, commercial properties. 70% of our tax revenues are coming from general property taxes. Now, in order to anticipate increased costs in running government, there has to be a way of increasing that tax base beyond what it is now. So we have a population of, what, 12,480 people in town, 5,300 households, just under 300 business enterprises in Fort Atkinson. So all of those things are components of the increase in the tax base. So to answer your question specifically, Michael, we do have some limitations in terms of Fort Atkinson's geography as to where we can expand housing, and that's been a matter for discussion for quite some time. We have this beautiful new development which is going up on Banker Road, and that expansion, I think, is going to be a tremendous addition to our residential component of that tax base, as well as developing other multifamily housing projects along the way. In terms of industrial development and business development, I'm so glad you asked that question because in studying the city's comprehensive plan, there is an itinerary of economic development programs and recommendations which were passed in the comprehensive plan. There are 12 recommendations or initiatives within that economic development section.
And could we have your closing? Well, we've got a few minutes here. What makes Fort Atkinson, in your opinion, a desirable place to live? You touched on that earlier in your.
I think that if you, anyone who comes here, I think, is going to get a sense of the culture of our town, and this is a unique place to live and work and raise families. We are right between these major metropolitan areas without having those major metropolitan challenges and problems. But in answering your question, Michael, the first thing challenges and problems. But in answering your question, Michael, the first thing that pops into my mind is just the family culture. The fact, and as I'm moving around the city in preparing for office, one of the things that strikes me is that we care for each other. We really care for each other, and I'll go as far as to say that, you know, we love where we live. We really love our community. So I think that's what makes Fort Atkinson a very desirable place to live, work, and raise our families.
And could we have your closing statement?
Of course. I'm looking forward to assuming responsibility on the Fort Atkinson City Council. And as I said earlier, Michael, I'm bringing with me a tremendous amount of experience, all that military experience and career can bring in terms of leadership, organizational capabilities, the ability to connect with all the stakeholders in the community. And my attitude is one of tremendous cooperation and collaboration. And I have actually, not waiting for April 4th, I've already undertaken that mindset. We began an organization called Citizens for a Better Fort Atkinson back in January. We've had two meetings so far, and it just symbolizes and exemplifies the spirit of cooperation that we will have going forward. We have challenges ahead of us. Those have been spelled out very, very capably by our department heads and by our very capable city manager, and those are expressed in our city budget and in our comprehensive plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, John, for joining us. Joining me now is candidate Kyle Jaikle. Hello, Kyle.
Hi, Mike.
Would you please give us your opening statement?
Hi. I'm Kyle Jaikle. I am running for City of Fort Atkinson City Council. Over the last, you know, years or that, I've always had a small intrigue in local government. Fort Atkinson has grown to be a community I've loved and be a part of. I grew up just outside of town, moved to Fort Atkinson about three and a half years ago with my son and my fiance, and have decided to hopefully call Fort Atkinson my home for as long as I can. Yeah.
Thank you. Recently, some, including the Fort Atkinson City Council and organizations such as the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, have called the state's funding system used for critical local services "broken." Do you agree with that assessment?
I do. You know, you see local municipalities and governments always struggling to find where money can be spent, or, you know, road maintenance, all sorts of areas. There needs to be more state funding for local governments that isn't, how do you want to say? You know, you're not asking the local people to always bring more money to the city. You know, you need to, we got a state budget that has like a $6 million, billion-dollar budget surplus. They need to address that to local municipalities.
It's been widely reported about the $7.1 billion surplus heading into the next two-year budget cycle. Do you think, well, you mentioned, we should get some help with that? Should be used to support services at the municipal level?
Yes, yes, I do.
And why?
You know, the state of Wisconsin residents, including all City of Fort Atkinson residents, have paid into that budget. You know, I think they want to see the money come back to the local where they can actually see the money be used and utilized.
Fort voters last year approved a referendum that allows the city to increase its budget above its revenue cap, but $769,000 into perpetuity to pay for the additional fire and EMS assets. City officials have said the money will still not fully cover the rising costs and inflation potentially coming in the years ahead. How should the city fund those future expenditures? And should the state or the county play a role in that?
I believe the state does need to address that, because that is a very widely known problem across the state. Every municipality is struggling with fire and EMS services. That is one area I do believe the state funding could help address them areas.
The city's moving forward with plans to build a new Department of Public Works campus at the site of the current campus. Do you think that's a good idea? Should the city be moving forward with these plans? Why or why not?
I believe, it's a tough subject to see people, you know, the city is going to be asking for $20 million-plus dollars to build this facility. A lot of people are going to see that as a big-ticket, hard-to-swallow pill. But last week, I did tour the facility and seeing the conditions of their buildings and what they are all working in, I believe it is something that needs to be addressed, maybe scaled back a little bit, but all will tell when they come back with their plans of what they need for buildings and that.
What do you think should be done with the city-owned former Loeb-Lorman property?
I think that needs to be addressed when the time comes, because as many people know, that land cannot be developed until 2027. With the built, or new development of the Banker Road project, that is going to address a lot of the housing development, so that might mitigate how much housing we need to do downtown area or in the Loeb-Lorman area, I should say. So that may be something, at that point in time, we need to look industrial more, but I think that's something in the three years, three to four years, that needs to be looked at closer than.
What about roads? Is the city making progress? When it comes to roads and the associated repair work, do you think the city is doing the right thing? And what do you think it needs to do differently, if anything?
Honestly, over the last few years, the city has made great strides, I think, by applying for grants from the state to help pay for the roads. They're getting a big portion conquered between that, between wheel tax coming through. A lot of people were upset about the wheel tax payment. A lot of people are upset about the property taxes. But those monies are going towards your road infrastructure, which people there, again, do see it being fixed and can see where their money is being spent.
Housing opportunities, jobs, and manpower, as well as growth by attracting new businesses, it all seems to be connected. Do you think the city is tackling these shortages? In what order should these problems be addressed, and how?
I think the city is doing a good job in tackling them. The housing is definitely a big problem. Without housing, you can't have employees. Without employees, you can't build businesses. You know, a lot of people, I've seen it reoccurring, industrial buildings are just, Fort Atkinson is stagnant in building industrial. For the last 20-some years, we have seen this Clement Industrial Park almost vacant. There's four to five businesses sitting out there, and one of the buildings is completely empty. You know, we need to get housing rolling further, faster, and then get an industrial park to help build the economy more.
In your opinion, what is, what are the top three attributes that makes Fort Atkinson a desirable place to live?
Fort Atkinson is a great town. You know, it's very centrally located between big cities. You're not half hour to 45-minute drive to Madison, Janesville, big cities for entertainment. There is a lot of little activities for families to do around Fort Atkinson as well. You know, during the summer, there's always a car show. Parks and Rec Department always has activities going on. You know, the community is just a very well-knit community. It doesn't, crime isn't terribly bad around. There's just a great community to live in and raise families in, good schools, everything.
What, in your opinion, are the, you touched on this earlier, but the top three challenges facing the city when it comes to attracting new residents?
The biggest thing I see is housing. We have, you know, three and a half years ago, when I was looking to buy my house, if you weren't there the minute the yard sign went up, you better not even plan on writing an offer that day, because they were selling so quick. And it seems that that phase has continued. You know, without new houses, you can't attract new people. And along with that, businesses. You need businesses to attract people, because they need a sustainable job to live within the community. And then you do need recreation on top of that. Families want to come to a city where there's something other than to work and sleep at. You know, they want to take their kids out, enjoy a night out, dinner, movies, recreational activities.
Thank you, Kyle. How important is tourism to the city of Fort Atkinson, and what is the city's role in supporting tourism?
Tourism is very important. Without tourism, you don't get the name of the city put out on the map. And by getting people to want to come to town, that gives them to realize how great of a little community we are and potentially get them to want to move into town, build their families, build their businesses, and expand beyond that.
Last question, why did you choose to run?
I chose to run, you know, from years, you know, running, working with my family business around local municipalities for different individuals and stuff, just seeing how different municipalities treat their residents. I want to see Fort Atkinson run in a better, better means, you know, more transparent, more welcoming to not only families but businesses, and keep, you know, everyone happy. I shouldn't say everyone happy, because you can't make everybody happy in politics. But I want to make sure that there's all routes or avenues explored to help make Fort Atkinson a great place.
Thank you, Kyle. Would you like to give your closing statement?
I guess kind of went through everything. I greatly appreciate all the support I can get on April 4th, the election. If you don't get out and vote, you don't really help express your own view or opinion as to who you're electing, so.
Thank you, Kyle. That concludes our time with Kyle, and thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
That concludes our 2023 Fort Atkinson City Council Candidates Forum. We hope you found it interesting and informative, and we want to thank our sponsors, the Heart of the City, the American Association of University Women, and FortAtkinsonOnline.com. I'm Michael Klisch. Thank you for attending, and please vote April 4th.